Good morning, everyone. I'm gonna call this Wilson County Commissioner's Court Order. Today's date is Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. It is nine o'clock AM for the record, we have four in the full court. Before we begin, we're gonna have a prayer by Elder Adrian Brown, Seventh-day Adventist Church in Florida. First of all, if I may, in honor of your dedication and most of the after the appreciation for the following and those who serve in our military. As a retired military, and I know there are probably a few here that then that is we need to make sure that we thank them for the freedoms that we have in this country. So I pray. My heavenly Father, we thank you again for the opportunity we have of coming and serving you on another day. We ask for your guidance, protected hand over each one of us. We ask for your Holy Spirit to come and be misplaced. Be with our leaders here, be with the leaders all levels of our country. We ask for your guiding hand to be upon each one. And especially in order to ask that you'll be with us here as we serve you and pray that your guiding and protecting hand will be upon each one that you will be done in your situation. For these things, I pray and I thank in the gracious name of Jesus.
Let the legion do the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Agenda item number three, public comment. Do you have anybody signed? Agenda item number four, we have certificates of completion, award, and bond of continuation. Do we have any? Agenda item number five, we have Commissioner Martin discuss and take action to appoint Chris Thune, is that correct? Chris Thune to the ESD number two Board of Commissioners.
All right, uh, morning, everyone. Uh, Mr. Thune, would you mind standing up? Uh, this is Chris Thune, Commissioner King and I spoke to him. He desires to be a commissioner for ESD two. And with that said, uh, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Chris Thune Thune to the ESD two Board of Commissioners.
Aye.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion? We're going agenda item number five. Your non-collude vote, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All votes against nay. Ayes have it, motion passed.
If you'll come up to the podium and he'll swear you in.
All you'll do is repeat your name last day, aye.
Call troubles or whatever.
Aye, Chris Thune. Do solemnly swear affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Commissioner ESD number two of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state so help you God. All right, thank you, sir. All right, what I'm gonna do, we have another one, uh, that will be appointed.
He will, he's running late.
He's running late. Okay, um, you will come up and photograph. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
So, he's not here yet?
No, he's a fair enough member.
Okay, we'll just bypass that. Mr. Taggs is not here, so we're gonna bypass agenda item number six and come back to it. We'll move to agenda item number seven, this Rusadado permitting and development director. Seven, eight, one, permit seven ninety-three spectrum precinct one and four. Where do you want to approve?
Yes, good morning. Uh, all these permits have already been sent off to the corresponding commissioners. We do have representatives from Spectrum here to speak on our behalf if you have any questions as far as where the lines will be going in. Uh, there's only one, I believe, that's going into precinct one and the rest will be going through Commissioner Aiken's precinct four. If you have any questions for them, please check in right now.
Anybody would like to come up?
Hello, good morning. Great, I'm Castaneda, I'm one of the construction supervisors overlooking the project that were requested approved for. How you doing this one?
I'm good, sir. Could you spell your last name for me?
Uh, C.A.S.T.A.N.E.B.A.
So, the biggest thing that we have with these projects is feedback from the community that we're whenever the work is being done, and this is not gonna be anything towards your current crew, but this is just what we've been going through in the last couple of years in Wilson County. Uh, that they leave the tailings of the pipe halfway into the road, they leave trash all over the ground. Uh, I want contact from your company to be able to give the people so that whenever they go to complain about it, they're talking to your company instead of me because I've been on point for a lot of this. And of course, whenever they go, why can't y'all explain to them that, look, they have the same power as Mottell, okay? They, they're able to take and do this work and the government is behind them, being bigger government than us. Uh, because they're not happy sometimes with the way it's been conducted, which is the life that we live in our service, but, uh, we need help from y'all to de-clean, pack up at the end of the day everything in this trash rather than it blowing around and, and have it look like a professional site. Once again, this is happening in some of my more rural areas on the eastern side of the county. Whenever you do this work now, you're in the middle of subdivisions, okay? There are gonna be people watching your crews twenty hours a day, seven days a week, and, and, uh, they're gonna be very critical if you're not running a good, clean scene whenever you're doing the work. And I mean, those are our concerns, and of course, you're gonna be doing the eight-one-one. History has it that the crews try to take and head anything that is under the ground whenever they're doing this. And I mean, it, it just, that's the nature of doing the work, but, uh, I don't believe you're gonna so much have natural gas content with, but you're gonna have water supply, you're gonna have some pre-existing, uh, issues with other utilities that, you know, you're co-mingling in an area, so make sure that they do the eight-one-one and adhere to where all of that's on. Go ahead. And my first hope, they're not ditching open in the cover for months and months. And, and, and I mean, uh, you know, before you leave, if everybody wants to be on point, will you give me a business card? I would appreciate it. I'll do the same. I'll give you mine. And, uh, because I can tell you, the, the, on this, the public is already excited. There, about a year ago, they went through and put up some pedestals and some of them in the middle of front yards that were in the right way, but the people have taken ownership and, and have always maintained it and take pride in, in their property, and they're like, da-da-da, we can't do anything about it. It, it's a part of the growth, uh, it's a part of the strategy of getting everybody internet and, and being connected.
Well, I, I, I appreciate the, the comments, uh. I acknowledge that we have been working in the area. Um, my point of contact has been available and as well as my coordinator, who's overlooking the project, we've been working with all the residents when issues do come up. Um, so I'd be more than happy to share my email and my, my direct cellphone number. So if any questions come up, they can contact me directly or our coordinator. Um, and again, with relations to safety and, and the concerns, I know we've had the issues in the past where, uh, another provider hits the gas nine years in Wilson County, um, and completely understand that, and we're taking the measures to make sure that we don't just have those issues as well. We're working with the SS, SS Water Supply, um, the gas company, we, we work with them, so that they're on site as well. Uh, we, we try to take our measures to make sure that we, uh, watch the team project, and then as far as the cleanup, we'll make sure we do not take care of it so that there's always any, uh, have any issue with us.
And for the public, all this work, these permits, basically downwind of three twenty-four, a lot of roads drives, and you talked about tier roads and wood valley, you cross, you know. So, anybody watching or listening or choosing, listen to this later, those areas, you're gonna see crews.
Yeah, and every crew should be out there with a magnet that says representatives of, of Spectrum or a contractor working on the asset.
And that's good because one of the things that came up previously was unmarked vehicles. And, and I mean, whenever I would drive up on that, I'd go, why don't you have your companies name on it? And of course, uh, no good answer was provided to me. And people will call the Sheriff's Department and have deputies go out there because they go, I see your vehicle, I don't know why it's in front of my property, it's been here for thirty minutes and it doesn't have anything on it, and all you're doing is wasting his resources.
Hundred percent agree. Uh, I'd like to, we'll, we'll have our vehicles marked as Spectrum on the site, so if anybody has any questions or concern, they know where the utility companies are there to do the work.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I'll leave your business card.
Okay, we'll get you there.
I'll entertain a motion on seven, eight, one.
Just, you have one more thing?
Uh, we'll also provide our damage then numbers, so that way if anybody has any questions, uh, they can make their case there.
Let me add something. I, I would like to recommend that we do seven ninety-three, uh, separate because it entails two different, and then we can do the rest.
I, I haven't figured out where it is in my precinct, so what street?
Wishburn Oaks, where we touch each other.
Okay, they're, oh, they, you gotta come across.
Our review, they're gonna take and go into Wishburn Oaks there for a discussion.
Cause I didn't see a map in here for anything on that, but.
If, if anybody needs design maps, I've got copies I can leave behind for you. And you've got some.
Right, and I've got one on the briefcase as well, where I drove the area. I mean, the main thing, whenever I drove it, it's exactly where I knew it to be is, is that these are all established, uh, with the exception of a new part of the crossing. They have been there for a long time, and, uh, they take pride in their community, and so I'm telling you that if they feel like they're not doing something right, I'm gonna get phone calls about it.
Yeah, and I'll reiterate that what they've all said is, uh, just prior, um, it, it's just good construction practices, you know, um, just keep your work area clean and, and, uh, cause there, there are a lot of retired folks that live out there, especially where you're going now, and, uh, I'll tell you, there's one on our review that sits right there across the line, and he'll probably be sitting down on this back porch every day watching what y'all are doing, so he, he won't hesitate to call me, I'm sure, so.
I have a motion to have a second.
Oh, did you make a motion?
I did.
Okay, I'll make a, uh, second.
Motion made seven ninety-three. Yes. Uh, motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion on seven, eight, one? Your non-collude vote, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All votes against nay. Ayes have it, motion passes. Now, we move to seven, eight, and I'm gonna go ahead and do all the way down to seven. Is that okay with your commission? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna name them off, seven, eight, two, permit seven ninety-four spectrum precinct four. Uh, A three, permit seven ninety-five spectrum precinct four. A four, permit seven ninety-six spectrum precinct four. A five, permit not, seven ninety-seven spec- spectrum precinct four. A six, seven ninety-eight spectrum precinct four. A seven, permit seven ninety-nine spectrum precinct four.
So, these are all in Commissioner Aiken's, so if he'd like to, um...
I've driven the area and I think I've already told the company, uh, where we need to be cautious, where we need to work with the public, so, um...
These are quite a bit, so if it's okay with you, uh, we can sign these after court.
I'll stay here and sign it.
Cause there's a couple of them.
I've, no, there's nobody riding, so I can call. Make a motion that we accept permit seven ninety-four, seven ninety-five, seven ninety-six, seven ninety-seven, seven ninety-eight, and seven ninety-nine from Spectrum, uh, with all of them respected within precinct.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion on seven, eight, two through seven? Your non-collude vote, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All votes against nay. Ayes have it, both motions pass. All right, we moved seven, eight, eight, permit eight hundred El Oso precinct two.
Yes, so this is a water utility permit that is pulled through El Oso Water Substate Corporation. This is in Commissioner King's precinct two. And, uh, map has been provided to him as well, so he can visit the site.
I went out there, I actually spoke to him as well, so, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve permit eight hundred El Oso off of County Road two sixty-two.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Thorne. Any other discussion on seven, eight, eight? Your non-collude vote, all voters say aye.
Aye.
All votes against nay. Ayes have it, motion passed. We move now to seven B subdivision Hidden Ranch Unit two B. One, review, review and approve final plan, discuss and take action.
Yes, so this, uh, portion of Hidden Ranch Unit two B went before the review committee was given, uh, this approval. It had a couple deficiencies that have since yet, well, I guess they've been met since then. Uh, we do have Mr. Rosenberg here, um, sorry, sir. Uh, on behalf of Mr. Liefes, he's, he's on his behalf. If you have any questions for him, uh, the three deficiencies that were needed to be met so that it would be approved by the review committee were that, um, I believe Commissioner Martin had brought this to the attention of the committee, that the second phase, the third phase of this subdivision had to connect all the way to County Road one twenty-eight.
Sixty-eight.
Uh.
I mean, yeah, sixty-eight.
I mean, one sixty-eight?
One sixty-eight, yeah.
One sixty-eight, so this was something that was a verbal agreement that had been brought to the attention when a previous director was here and, and when the master plan was submitted. Uh, the other deficiencies that had to be met was Techstock permit, uh, Techstock has said that the permit needed to be updated. Uh, we did speak to Techstock, they are here to, they're the bad of as well. They have not yet met a hundred homes. I believe they're at seventy-five right now. Once they meet a hundred homes, that's when they would need the deceleration lane, the lectern lane. And the other deficiency that was brought up by the review committee that since then has been met is that IFC twenty twenty-one supersedes the regulations and the fire blow test was needed, and, um, reveals here from Picosa, and that has been conducted as well. So, if you'd like to speak to Mr. Rosenberg.
Before you cut that, did you say it has been approved at committee or not?
It was not approved at the review committee.
Okay. The deficiencies, I, I thought you said disapproved along with it.
Yes, it was not given an approval to give the review committee. Mr. Rosenberg, would you like to speak?
Um, Shelley Baker, excuse me, little Rosenberg, for Mr. and Mrs. Liefes on Hidden Ranch Unit two B. Um, I'm gonna work off of, you're gonna receive in front of you the Hidden Ranch five seven two two five, uh, response that went to Mr. Liefes, and I'd like to address these as soon as the documents are in front of you. Mr. Liefes, you're back in the back door, just raise your hand. Your engineer's next time, Mr. Christina, and Brenda's back there next to you keeping both of you straight. There's more paperwork here than you need, but I wanna answer all the questions that this lady gave me the first day I met with her, and I, I think I can answer each and every one of them in a positive. I'm gonna wait for the distribution if I may, just with them.
I'm sorry.
I'm gonna wait for the distribution, it's not gonna...
Yeah, no, no, no problem.
Who is the incorrect name, uh, stating something wrong, I guess, maybe. Okay, um, that's the new in color site plan, and the reason that I'm furnishing it to you in two sizes, one's big so you can read it, judge, you have that in front of you. And the other's in the smaller size, that you can see the same thing on the floor. Let me address these issues as follows. We started with the Hidden Ranch two B, uh, May first, and after conference confirmation, it says the board has presented an unfavorable recommendation for this phase of the project. I wanna be sure that we understand what two B is, because after saying they have an unfavorable recommendation, the committee has the following suggestions. And it's the suggestions that I have the problem that I'm addressing to you today, because I don't know how to address a disapproval that's not a disapproval, it's suggestions that are suggestions except to just talk about it. And so I put the letter that Ms. Serrato gave me in front of you in my talking piece. Fair enough? Okay, first of all, Commissioner Precinct one is brought to the attention of the engineer that the current phase was supposed to be on County Road one sixty-eight. If you'll take the document and go to page two, the second document you have in your portfolio, you'll see where we've shown the site plan, and the site plan here, is the site plan that we used and submitted for the drainage and for the topography, and it shows the little site where you have ten acres. And those ten acres there do not...
All right, Mr. Rosenberg, where are you at? You in this or you in this? What, which one are you in?
I'm in the one with the little, uh...
Okay.
Actually, I'm gonna be working from both of them.
Well, where, where are you at right now? That's what I'm asking.
He's right here. He's on the map, page two of the binder.
I'm starting with the page that's got the cover sheet, sir.
Okay.
That's my cue card, and then I'm on the page behind it. The reason I'm giving you the site plan is you can see that the site plan does not connect to any Techstock highway. It's there by its lonesome, all by itself, and that's what was reviewed. Now, for the record and for any official future statements, Mr. Liefes and Etsy Liefes Trust are not going beyond the ten lots that are proposed here. That's basis always, okay? And we wanna make it clear that that's what's before you today. I'm not asking you to go any further direction, any further distance, any other location besides what's before you. And I hope that plan that you have in front of you is clear and, and most of you are familiar with it. And Commissioner Martin, I wanna be sure that that's clearly...
So, what you're saying is there's gonna be no further development past this point at all?
By Mr. Liefes.
Okay, so that is, that is, that is not important. That is not important. And I'll tell you why. Because our regulations state, and they stated previously that if there was a road to tie into, you needed to tie it into that county road, okay? That's, that's, that's the first thing. The second thing is, is back when unit two was approved, there was agreement, albeit apparently not in writing, but it was discussed, because I was involved in that discussion with the permit director at that time, that they would do it in the next phase, and so we said, okay. And so now we're at the next phase. Now, I, I, you can, you can argue all you want to, this isn't the next phase, cause this is not phase three. This is the next phase that happened after the one where that agreement was made, okay? That is, that is my position, and I don't know if Mitch Huron wants to chime in on that or not.
Well, if, if, are, are you saying that it's not gonna be tied into County Road one sixty?
Right.
And what I'm relying on is a document that you have in the package. If you'll go to document A, there's two pages that are written, and they resulted from a meeting with Techstock. And this is not the Old Testament, this is the New Testament, and this is now what we use word and all the stuff. The last statement in this document on page two says...
Mr. Rosenberg, I don't need to interrupt, Mr. Rosenberg, which one, what are you reading from now?
I'm reading from a document.
Is it this one here?
No, it's, it's, it's the three-page, or four-page, or five-page, that doesn't have any.
Seems like this needs to go back to the committee.
I don't think it does.
Huh?
It's in court now, it already went to a meeting.
I don't think we can send it back to them to make sure all of them...
And make him redo it?
We're staying, and it's not gonna be tied in, Commissioner Martin, it's stating that it needs to be tied in, so therein lies one of the issues of, uh, obviously why the, uh, the committee, uh, did not approve it, is because there's no tie-in to County Road one sixty. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, whether there were agreements or not, if, if the county is requiring it for once this done, that's one of the reasons that there's, there's, you're finding that you're not approved or you're not required. Like you're stating you don't have to, or you don't?
Well, it's not required by your rules.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what I'm going by.
Okay, well, that's, I, 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 maybe I can put some of this to, and, and I mean, you, you're welcome to continue, but I, I'm gonna suggest at this point that it needs to go back to the committee to be reviewed, to make sure all these things are taken care of. Did we get a final plat ready for approval to look at today? We got my Lars? All right, I will see one of those, because what, the last thing I see in here is it's, you're still calling that a temporary cul-de-sac. My expectation is, and I believe our rules require that that cul-de-sac needs to be there, and it needs to be paved. There's, there's a lot of questions that I have. Yeah, this plat's not showing that that cul-de-sac is paved, so.
But it's not required that it be paved because it's-
Yes, sir, it is, because it's gotta be there, it's gotta be an all-weather road for fire protection.
But it's gonna be removed after, after construction?
It, it can't be removed after construction. You can't, you can't have a dead-end road without a cul-de-sac. Chief? Here.
Come on up, Chief. This cul-de-sac will just be- Okay, let's go to the life-
It's not, that's gonna remain a private road. And if she has a, an agreement for it too?
Yes, it's from a distance. This is the existing road here. They have this distance which is 90 plus 130.
Okay.
So we only put a temporary agreement here for this request. This way they can put a base here to give you a return or anything either.
But it's not a request. It's, that's required under the subdivision regulations.
So are you asking what?
For the Fire Code, Fire, does the Fire Code state anything different?
So the Fire Code would not require a cul-de-sac, and so the road needs 500 feet around.
Okay. But it is required under, under our regulations.
I don't dispute that.
But you approved the review from Fire Department.
So the only thing I approved was, the question was, did he or did he not provide fire flow data? And we do have that.
And it was acceptable?
Yes. That's right.
And that was for process?
That was for process.
That was for process? So the issue we have, is we may, if you may, I'll be remanded on, is the question of-
Yeah, that, that, if you're basically, you know, 'cause what you're saying is, is Mr. Liefestie's not gonna develop anything else. So whoever comes in behind him's gonna be responsible for all this. That's basically what I think you're telling me. And we have, we have the other issue is, is so we have, we have this private road. Did we get a private road agreement on that?
No, we did not have a private road agreement.
Okay.
Do you have a private road agreement?
What?
Private road agreement?
No. Yeah, so, I mean, and, and that's been another question of mine, is why are you, if you're not gonna do any more development, why are you putting a road through there, even ma- even a private road? I mean, it doesn't make sense. It just tells me that at some point, somebody's gonna use that for something and allows them to provide access.
It's, it's my position that you deny a tie-in to County Road 168. I'll talk to the council about that. The other item that you have on there is just simply the fact that it's quality of the base of the road?
No, it, it needs to be paved.
It needs to be paved?
Yes, sir. It's not an issue. It is a requirement of the regulations to have a cul-de-sac there. All dead-end roads have to have a cul-de-sac.
Okay, all right. And what about the superseded issue here? That superseded issue gone, because I have documentation that that's not part of the process here?
No, it is. And yes, the Fire Code that we adopted supersedes all of our regulations. You have to comply with the Fire Code, because we adopted the Fire Code.
All right. Adra? What I believe to be a statement along should look at page six. Says the International Fire Code, jury does not directly supersede subdivision regulations for Texas County courts. While the IFC sets standards for fire safety and destruction, it doesn't dictate the requirements for how land is divided and mapped. And he goes on to say subdivision regulations, these regulations developed by counties address the larger picture of land development. They cover things like lot sizes, street layouts, access and utility directions. Lots of detail maps show how a piece of land is divided into lots, streets and other features to ensure that we all comply with county local zoning and subdivision regulations. And are you telling me that this International Fire Code has been adopted down by the county and is on the regulation? I don't see that anywhere.
Yeah, and, and you, and I think you, you missed a couple of key words. Generally does not directly supersede. IFC sets standards for fire and safety, doesn't dictate requirements for how land is divided and mapped. That's not what we're asking for here. We're asking that you comply with the parts of the Fire Code that apply to this, which is that you meet the fire flow requirements and whatever other requirements that are in there that would apply that don't apply to the planning. This thing goes in here to talk about, we don't regulate fire-related building materials or anything like that?
You've complied with the Fire Code.
Sir?
You've complied with the water flow requirements because it's providing service-
Yes, I believe that is correct.
And you have a letter before you that said that.
Yes.
Date of the 24th.
Yes.
And that's what the fire chief relied upon when he approved it.
Yes.
So I don't see the council, I don't mean to be condemnations, but I don't see how the International Fire Code that's occasionally adopted by major cities, how that fits here in Wilson County.
Hey, it's my, it's my understanding that you complied with, that the, uh, that what was required, uh, has already been, uh-
Yeah.
brought to compliance.
It, it, that, that is correct.
So-
The, the issue we had at the time was that they were refusing to do it. Apparently that has been reversed, that decision has been reversed by your party. And so it is now in compliance.
Yes, sir, it's my understanding that, that at the time the denial was made by the committee, that these were the issues. Since then, though, uh, I believe the fire flow test has been in compliance and also the Texas permit also has been, uh, provided. Is that right?
All right, so we're showing you the red flag.
Yes, I believe so. It's the, uh, it's the connection to 168 and now the, the, the cul-de-sac that's dead end that's, uh, now a concern. Is that correct, Commissioner?
Yeah, that, and that, and that's what, that was what was in the letter. Those, those are the two big issues right there.
So you're worried about emergency services ingress and egress?
Well, that's, that's part of it, and I mean, that's the purpose of the cul-de-sac.
A question, looking at this plat, so it says existing Unit 1, existing Unit 2. And I pulled it up on Google Maps, like some tool. There's a couple homes in 1, it looks like, built out. 2 doesn't exist.
Correct.
There's no infrastructure whatsoever.
Yeah, that's an old map.
Okay, well, I, I mean, I'm just looking at-
No, 2 is-
We haven't even built that out, we're trying to-
2, 2, 2 is probably 50%, maybe a little more, built out.
Okay, so there are homes-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There is road infrastructure in there.
Yes.
It's not showing up.
Yeah, yeah.
Bad enough for Google.
Yeah.
Get your pictures updated.
Yeah.
The reason we, we turned it on compliant at the committee was that these things that he's telling us were corrected this morning weren't corrected at the time we denied.
Correct.
Yes.
Right, but they're corrected now, which was the reason-
We didn't know that when they came-
No, I, I'm trying to be respectful. The reason I asked, I have it put on the agenda for approval is because we believe it had been correct.
And that's what we're saying, is there, we got at least two of them that apparently are not directed to our satisfaction.
Counsel, what do you want to proceed? 'Cause I, I have a new desire.
Well, it's not up to me to proceed. It's, it's up to the, the court to decide whether to send it back to the committee for review again to see whether these items have in fact been, uh, been cleared up or whether the court was just exposed.
Yeah, well, I get, uh, Mr. Phong, would you mind coming to the microphone? 'Cause you expressed some concern at that meeting, and, and I understand that your concerns have been- Colin, okay, Colin, do you, uh, come address the, the turn lane?
So, yeah, I heard it, um-
Say your name, sir.
Yeah, Colin, you got your text shot. So I told him, I dug it up, um, it's good for up to 100 homes, for cafeteria or 100 homes. I don't believe we're up to that point yet. So I think at that committee, we had misspoke, um, heard rumors of when, I guess when it was being discussed, like back when, um, we were pushing for a deceleration lane and then show was lighting. And then there was red lines on this. Yeah, so it was red lined on the permit, and then that's what we had agreed to, things back in 2019.
2018, 2:45 PM, April 3rd.
So they're in compliance with our permit right now.
Okay, thank you.
The Google for the first, uh, half of the first.
So are they gonna tie it into County Road 168 or not?
I don't know. No, okay. I'll make a motion to deny the plat for Hidden Ranch Unit 2B and remand it back to the committee for resolution.
Do you have a second?
Second?
Okay, all right. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion on 7B1? You're not, all for the book, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Allohs against, aye? Aye's had it, motion passed. Do we remand it back?
I guess it's appropriate now I should be asking, excuse me. Have a second.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg.
Uh, Russell?
Ms. Huron, do you have a question?
Uh, don't we have anything else?
Uh, I need, you gotta go back to your-
We're gonna go back to Agenda Item Number 6. We have Commissioner King, who's in to discuss and to take action on 30 to appoint Preston Tags to the ESD Number 5 Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Tags, he's here. If you can, come up to the podium, please, sir. So Commissioner Martin and myself spoke to, uh, Trooper Tags about getting on the ESD 5 Commission, and I think he'll be a great fit for it. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to put, uh, Trooper Preston Tags on the ESD 5 Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Martin. Do we have any other discussion on Agenda Item Number 6? You're not, all for the book, all in favor of saying aye?
Aye.
Allohs against? Motion passed. Congratulations. Tag, Trooper Tag, I'm on to your unit. All right, stay right there. All you gotta do is say your name, aye?
Aye. Preston Tags.
Do solemn swear firm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the Office of Commissioner, ESD Number 5 of the State of Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States in this state to help you guide. Okay, so congratulations. Come over here and get a picture of you.
The fire code's gonna be driving backwards to the coast.
Agenda Item Number 8, we have Commissioner Gary Morton discuss, take action on updates to personnel policy manual.
Okay, uh, as you remember, at the last court, we talked about updating the personnel policy manual to include the, uh, most recently fraud, waste and abuse policy. So, uh, Ms. Botterford, I'll turn it over to you to see what you figured out.
So I took a look at that, and the only place that that fits in is gonna be at the end of this policy. Um, the reason being you guys have a signature sheet at the end that I don't think would make any sense putting the middle of the whole book. So the only, the only place to put that one would be at the end.
Okay. And then I think Commissioner King, you had something else you wanted to add to the, have her, have her make a revision and bring us the electronic version next court?
Yes, what, uh, something that we might, or that we need to look into is having, uh, start tagging or badging every, all the county employees. So, uh, that is something that we do need to put in the, to the book.
And we, and we do have the equipment in the emergency management, so it can be, it can be done. I know some of us in, I've been the pastor, required my guys to go get it, but then we got so much turnover, it was like, okay. So that can be part of the onboarding process too, I guess, when they come in to fill out their paperwork with you, they can go get their ID made.
Yes, and that's a discussion that can take place with Cindy on, on, on that work. And, uh, not just onboarding, but it terminates some of the work that you need to-
Yeah, well, yeah, mhm.
Yeah, 'cause, uh, with, with that, we can, uh, everybody knows who are, who's floating around the courthouses and everything else like that, so, or anywhere else, so.
Or if they had to come in after hours, or, uh, there's an emergency, or we're getting in a lockdown situation or something that way. I know, I know for our staff, it's probably gonna be easier for them to make sure it's in their pocket, so they have it with them. So they don't knock it off or get tangled up in it, it's a safety issue a little bit. I don't know if Commissioner Perdola or Aiken or anybody else had anything else they'd like to see added or changed in the, in the manual. I know this was kinda short notice, but these were the two items we knew about that came up. So we can take care of these, and if y'all have anything else, we can, we can look at it.
Yeah, I have, with our group argument, saying that we should place that, um, reduce waste policy at 2D17, 'cause that is a this. I was looking at the employee manual, I'm just thinking maybe on Section B, order rules and employment responsibility.
Select the one?
I thought about that one too, and it could fall under C as well for county property and employee responsibility. The only, the only issue is you guys have a signature page in this one.
Okay. Where would those apply?
No, instead of doing, uh, instead of doing to, to C, I would make a whole other, it would be 3, and it would be its own section.
The 2C section.
I would make it its own section. Make it a section 3.
I haven't heard that language from, from-
Well, I was just gonna say, adopting the policy versus the signature page. I mean, we adopted the entirety of the policy and had to do a signature page for it.
Very.
This is basically just in addition to it. So I would drop the signature page, so that that's not an issue for employees going through it.
I could, if, if you want, I can, uh, modify the Word document to remove the signature pages to be added to the handbook, because isn't there a signature page for the employees in the handbook anyway?
There is. I, I would just keep record of this, so that you-
Right, that, that's filed with the county clerk and has already been sent off to our grantor. Yeah, mhm.
Okay, so the action would be just to update the manual for all of use of race? I'm not sure if Commissioner Martin was another thing that-
Well, it's badging.
The badging, okay.
Yeah.
We're all county based.
I would actually say, you know, with, I thought that, once it's done, I'll bring it back to court. You could, you guys can review it and then adopt it at that time.
Let's talk about the badging for a second. The treasurer and I have talked about getting into this century with the way that we do a payroll. In it's where people have access online to their pay checks, where we're not sending paper anymore. This is in the beginning stages, but if we're gonna do a badging system, then it would make sense to connect it with that for swap-ins, swap-out, recognition, it's all timed together.
I don't, uh, uh, let me ask him a question. I don't, uh, so do you, are you familiar with the badging stuff they have over there at all? At, at the emergency management? 'Cause I, I don't think it has a barcode. I don't know that.
No, it's just a picture ID.
It's, it's just a picture ID, yeah.
That's two different things that we're talking about. Yeah, you're talking about- That's two different things that we're talking about. Yeah, you're talking about, Commissioner King's talking about an ID badge versus.
So this badge can be either or where, uh, Jason could actually get it where they can tag, just like the, in the Sheriff's Department as well, where they can tag it up to a door and it unlock that door.
But I, I don't, I don't.
Can you hear the record of that employee going in and out?
Well, right, but I don't think, well, number one is we don't have a lock system to do that in place now anywhere in the county except the Sheriff's Office. And number two is I don't think that badging, cause I believe I asked that question about three years ago. Yeah. Right, yeah. Cause it's, so a lot of it's by key punch, right? Sheriff, you gotta enter code, you gotta know the code.
We're entering budget season, it's something to discuss since we came up.
Yeah, well, and, and Ms. Trevino reminded us that I think when we looked, this, cause about four years ago, right, you know, we looked at this and the historical commission would not allow us to change, have that lock on the courthouse itself.
Not here on this building.
Because of the historical building. Now, I, I'm finding that kinda hard to believe since there's so many historic renovations going on and buildings are upgraded and so I don't know, I, I think it's worth, I'm, there's gotta be, there's gotta be, cause that could all be mounted on the inside, so it doesn't affect the exterior view and you just have the.
What we did is that you end up going through a portal where you have to take the swap-in and swap-out after you're already inside. Lot to consider if they could just.
And, and no problem with what you said, I, what, what we would like to see is employee ID badging, because not all of us know all of the employees.
And, you know, even if it's one of the peace officers from the sheriff, if it's a weekend and something, the stuff hits the fan, you may or may not know who they are, whether you should let them in the building or not, you know, I mean.
Jason, is the, uh, EMC, is it gonna have badging or not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, I will. And we'll standardize the Sheriff's Office.
Okay. Cause that means dispatch is gonna have to have badging as well. Yes.
As far as here and how it's, it's, we call it by into the door mechanism, so how it's. So there might be workarounds.
Judge, we can add that to the discussion with Ms. Salgado with the historical commission as we work on the repairs.
Also to clarify with Commissioner Aiken, as far as our discussion, like time sheets and like clock, uh, time clock plus, that's not really, I haven't, we'll do that option about that. Keen their information in or having faster than getting, uh, put knocked back or they, they're like checking the backs. So I'm just getting at some clock plus.
But they don't work off the badge system, they work off of the reporting.
It's all, yeah, so just. Yeah, I mean.
Two different things, yeah.
I know in various companies you can take and see somebody, the, the biggest deal they can get at a trade show is one of those things that holds all their badges that they have to have. Going to different places and the road crews don't want that to be shared, uh, because they're gonna end up on the side of the road. One being in their wallet is gonna be a mouth. Where somebody goes, where are you with?
Yeah, well, at least our guys, when they're out, they're in a uniform.
Correct.
So they're, they're readily identifiable as to, as to who they are. Yeah.
Usually in neon yellow and next to a truck that has a big decal on it that says Wilson County.
Yeah.
Okay, somewhere in that discussion is very important.
That's what I was just trying to figure out. I don't know, uh, so we, we, so I guess our direction is, is for, for you to build that policy and add it and then get that one incorporated, so I guess the motion is, is to update the manual with the badging and fraud, waste, abuse policy and bring it back for final approval next court.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion on agenda item number eight? You're none, all for the vote. All for the favor say aye?
Aye.
Allovers against? Ayes have it, motion passed. Move to agenda item number nine, uh, Sheriff Jim Suris on monthly progress.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You're back.
I'm back. Did I have our CFO's information on some for, uh, for Wisconsin Sheriff's? Uh, if I could get up there and read the numbers off a piece of paper. So I'll tell you what we've done this last month. We promoted, uh, Steve Moore to Lieutenant of Control. We also promoted, uh, Taff Reynolds to Lieutenant of Administration who will, will receive admin records and vehicle maintenance. We hired two new deputies, uh, Courtney Aguilar, she's fresh out of Academy, no long enforcement experience. She does have civilian experience with K nine training. Uh, we also hired Justin Loveless, he's been in peace office for three and a half years. He, um, is excited to work and they're both in their FDL programming phase. Uh, last month we had a bunch of training with patrol rifles, it was a sixteen hour course, every small court personnel in the office had to complete it. Uh, let's see, last week Lieutenant Reynolds and I attended OC instructor certification, so we're all training with it, right, bunch of people with OC. Um, beginning of the year, we, uh, we're all issued new mobile data terminals which find languages laptops and the computer. Then laptops in the patrol units. Um, I talked to Communication Supervisor Herrera this morning. She's on track with DOC and transitioning to Communication Center into the new building. She projects that she'll be in there by mid-October. Uh, our DWI, for anybody watching, our DWI enforcement has increased. If you're gonna drive while intoxicated in Wilson County, we're gonna accommodate you at the Wilson County Jail. So let's get into these stats. The call volume for, uh, April went up, uh, we are at five hundred and fifty-eight reportable calls and fifteen or one thousand five hundred and twenty calls of non-reportable. Uh, something I'd like to highlight in the next box is our mental health calls have gone up. Let's see. Our guys have, uh, patrol has conducted four hundred and twenty-seven, uh, traffic enforcement or code enforcement calls. Next page, uh, we need, uh, traffic citations, eighty-one. Uh, burn ban, there was a little burn ban citation issued last week, or last month because y'all live with the uh, burn bans were pretty common. Traffic warnings are at four hun, or three hundred and seventy-three. That makes traffic stops for the total month, or why am I not told, I'm in April. Four hundred and fifty-four traffic stops for the month for patrol. Uh, cases sent to CID, the next page is ninety-seven. Uh, they closed eleven of those calls and the rest are in further investigation. The criminal interdiction unit, which is our lone star operation guys. Um, let's see, they have thirty-five felony arrests, nineteen misdemeanor arrests, two hundred and thirty-seven traffic stops between interdiction and patrol, that is six hundred and ninety-one traffic stops for the month. Uh, they participated in an operation in Walert County at the beginning of April. The jail staffs, we are, uh, they took in a hundred and twelve inmates for the month of April. Now, that is a combination of every law enforcement agency that operates inside Wilson County. That is not just our office. That's DPS, that's Forest Book PD, that's OPD, that's Alberta, that's Texas Parks and Wildlife, and whoever wants to go somewhere to Wilson County Jail. Um, let's see, our average intake for the, our average daily intake for the month of April was four. The last page is the new page, let's see, it is the court security staff. We are gonna start tracking everything they do. They have driven sixty-five hundred miles, that's between the sheriff's office to the federal courthouse transporting, uh, federal inmates for transporting the TDCJ. They are also taking calls that populate here at the courthouse or at the district courthouse. Um, and they're, they actually do assist with our mental health transports if we have to take them to a higher level of care facility. And that is the stats for the month.
What's a non-reportable call?
A non-reportable call would be traffic stopped by security checks, I stop and check, continue on your car, looking down. Reportable calls would be something that is, uh, an offense, I may contact you in ten minutes, so if you stop me.
Thank, uh, and I'm gonna direct this to the sheriff. I had the opportunity to work with, uh, one of your deputies you recruited. Um, I guess it was last year, uh, directly out of the academy. Um, I was very pleased with what I saw. He obviously learned a lot being here. Um, he's one of those that we hired last summer, I think in August, that came directly out of the academy and then we trained him. I, I was, I was really blown out compared to a lot of people I've seen in the past, so, um, I, I strongly encourage you to continue that program as best you can. I know it's hard to recruit them out of the academy sometimes, but that one worked very well. I think he makes a good example.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Agenda item number ten, uh, Ms. Don, Lawrence County Tax Service Collector Report. I'll let y'all take a look at that, but we'll, we'll put it here from our office. Agenda item number eleven, we have Christine Moose, County Treasurer, discuss take action on County Treasurer's filing report.
Good morning. What I'm providing with y'all today is my April twenty twenty-five Treasury Report. So as we go through there, you'll see all the checking accounts listed with any debits and credits for this month, or for that month of April. Followed by then our CDs. And then those accounts as well. Then followed by our investment accounts. Show you the average interest rate for that month, beginning and ending balance with any deposits or withdrawals that we had to make. This will follow with, you know, our outstanding debt that we do pay and our lease purchases are listed. And then ending, as always, with what is titled the Treasury Report, but listing every fund that we have within our software with all the transactions that's taking place in that month.
Ms. Moose, um, I'm trying to remember now. I think it was, may have been in April, so it probably didn't happen, but I remember there was one fund that we were gonna move and combine it with someone, something else, cause it was real small, so that happened. I'd have to go back and look at my notes to see, I just couldn't remember off the top of my head now.
Within your funds?
No, no, it was county, it was a county fund. Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't remember. I'd have to go back and look at my notes to see. Uh, I just remembered that this morning.
It, it would depend. If it's within the funds, like let's just say, you're, you're sure those exist.
Well, it might have been the, the, uh, no, that's interest.
Yeah.
It was, it was, it was one of these that didn't have much. It only had like three or four thousand dollars and it wasn't earning much interest. Uh, we talked about. Yeah. Was it the bottom, oh, maybe it is the one, what was the one at the bottom.
Probably, yes, so what we had to, what we talked about was, um, we did withdraw that money for the purchase, uh, that we did make with the land, and then yes, it did leave that in there. I have not transferred it out yet. Um, that's fair on my part, just to see exactly if this can be utilized somewhere and granted, it does go into our operating account, just if it's just going to be miscellaneous revenue or if we need to code it for something different. No, that has not been taken out at this time.
Okay.
It's earning a little bit. We, it's a little bit less, uh, for interest, but no. I have not gotten, um, down such doing that yet.
Is that the northeastern one?
I'm sorry, the financial one, eastern one, yes, in the very bottom. That is the one that has about the two hundred, a little over two hundred and seventy that we withdrew at that time. So it is still sitting there, um, obviously, um, it is earning a little bit, but we can go ahead and take that um, and move that into operating. I can note that, cause we are, what, twenty-seven, so it'll reflect in the month of May. We'll get that taken care of. Yeah, it's immediate, it can.
Okay, thank you.
Take them. I don't know if there's any other questions on the other accounts or status or for the month of April.
I'll make a motion to approve the April twenty twenty-five County Treasurer's report.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. We have any other discussion on agenda item number one? You're none, all for the vote. All for the favor say aye?
Aye.
Allovers against, nay? Ayes have it, motion passed.
Thank you.
Agenda item number twelve, Ms. Jalen Marfer, Human Resource Treasurer, presentation of payroll and personnel payment.
Jeanine Cox was hired as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, making twenty fifty-three an hour of forty-four thousand eight forty-three twelve annually effective May twelfth. Elieper Moreno was hired as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, making twenty fifty-three per hour of forty-four thousand eight forty-three twelve annually effective May fourteenth. Griffin Staggs resigned from his, his position as a corrections officer effective May eighth. And Serena Sanchez resigned from her position as a dispatcher effective May twentieth.
Motion, please. Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, Reverend Trevino, County Auditor, who has take action on County Bureau.
She transformed herself into someone else.
Hello, Ms. Trevino.
Oh, did you, did you look at this?
Three hundred and two thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents.
She gave you a five thousand dollar discount? Well, no, oh, she must, she had, she, she had ten in there the other day on that, on that send off.
I'll take it.
I was gonna say, I, I'm not gonna.
You have a five grand bet?
Something.
So what shared bill are we getting from Cooper?
For the truck?
Yeah.
In the approvals, that one seventy twenty-five was there, and that's where it was with the Cooper bill, so is it back for any?
All right, Commissioner Martin, hand the motion to the county.
Good. I'll make a motion to pay the bills at three hundred and two thousand seven sixty-nine ninety-eight cents.
Motion made by Commissioner King, second by Commissioner Aiken. We have any other discussion on agenda item number thirteen? You're not a hall of honor vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All who's against, aye. You maintain the motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn, second. He got it before me.